Welcome to the League of Women Voters of Manatee County Candidate Forum. I'm Alice Newland. I'm the co-president of the League of Women Voters of Manatee County. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan public policy organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. The League does not support or oppose any candidate or party. The League has both men and women members. Before I start, I'd like to talk briefly about our voting information. We do have voters' guides. They're going out to, they've gone out to libraries and to senior communities and other communities. It's also online. So if you go to LWVManatee.org and you go to election information, they, they will have the links to the voter's guide, the links to vote411.org, which all this voter's guide information from the candidates is in vote411.org, where you can see your ballot and the candidates' answers to issues that are important to voters. And also links to other sources like Ballotpedia and all these videos of not only our candidate forums, but also candidate forums from other nonpartisan or well-run candidate forums. We're very pleased to have candidates for the Manatee County Commission One District. Carolyn Phelps, we have heard, has had a medical emergency. She very much wanted to be here, so we're going to try to intersperse some of her answers to the voter's guide. We also have Jen Hammy and Glenn Pearson. Stephen Metallo is also running against Carolyn in the primary, but he did not respond to our quest for the candidate forums or the guide. Voters deserve to know candidates' positions on issues. Today's candidate forum rules call for civility on the part of both candidates and the audience. Hallmark of democracy is the willingness of our community to treat each other with courtesy and respect. And in that spirit, and we are here this evening, we'll engage in a vital part of our democratic process and a civilized discussion of important issues. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening comments and then one minute to answer questions. Ginger McCallum, our Government Service Action Team Chair, will hold up this sign when it is time to complete that question. Finish your sentence and move on to the next candidate question. At the end of the forum, candidates will give, be given one minute for a close. We ask that all candidates speak only about themselves and not provide insight into their opponent's positions. There are no rebuttals. This presentation is being recorded and will be on, as I said, the League of Women Voters of Manatee County website. Parts of it may not be shown without written permission from the League of Women Voters of Manatee County, but it can be shown in entirety. We are taking questions for the candidates, so please put them in chat. And to Colleen Friedman, and she will be monitoring chat and presenting the questions. We're going to alternate who answers first. So we will start with Glenn. Glenn, why should voters choose you to represent District One?
Well, first of all, Alice, I'd like to thank you for inviting me to be a part of this forum, you and the League of Women Voters of Manatee County. Why should I be chosen as Commissioner, District One? First of all, I've lived here in Manatee County now for the past 14 years, nine years being in District One. I've really enjoyed living here. However, I'm experiencing the very same problems with congestion. I see the problems when it comes to overdevelopment. All of these things, I hear complaints from everyone I talk to. It makes no difference if they're Republican, Democrat, no party affiliation, makes no difference. The problems are universal and they cross party lines. Why am I running? Well, actually, I was asked to run. It wasn't something that I had planned on doing. I'm not a politician. I've never, I've never held public office before. Right now, I'm a small business owner. I have a small insurance agency. I specialize in healthcare, Medicare, supplement insurance, life insurance, and retirement income. That's what I've been doing. And before that, I had a 35-year career as a broadcast journalist, as a news anchor and a news reporter. During that time, I, my beat was politics and religion, the two things you're not supposed to talk about in polite company. But I learned just how important politics and religion, both of those things are to society as a whole. I've had a lot of experience when it comes to holding politicians' feet to the fire. I see what happens when they put their own interests ahead of the interests of the public. That's one of the reasons that people were asking me to run. After careful consideration, I decided that I'd be a hypocrite if I didn't do it because I've been trying to get other people to run. So here I am doing this. I know how to research. I know how to listen and I definitely, and I'm going to listen to you right now because you're saying my. So I'm proving I know how to listen.
Thank you, Glenn. Candidate Hammy.
Hi, hi. Yes, I'm Jen Forhami, also running for District One. I'm running as an NPA. I also want to thank the League of Women Voters for having us today and giving us an opportunity to talk to everybody. I have three, basic three categories on why I think you should choose me for District One County Commission. The first is going to be my education and my background. I have also lived in the parish area for the last nine years. I own a local law practice in Ellington. I've been in the legal field for over 25 years, practicing as an attorney. I've owned my own business through that entire time. So I have run two very successful businesses, first in Ohio and then in, here in Florida, as in the legal field. My education as an attorney gives me the background necessary to do the job. There's a lot of research. There's a lot of ordinances and rules and laws that are necessary for the commissioners to be aware of and understanding in order to make the decisions that they're making. And I have the capabilities of doing that because I've been doing it for so long. Secondly, is my community involvement. Not only have I lived here for nine years, but I jumped right into the community shortly after I moved here. I've served as the president of the Parish Civic Association. I was appointed to the Child's Service Advisory Board through the county. I have, I'm in the Cattlemen's Association. I am a member of the Parish Alks. I sit on the board for the Take Stock in Children. I'm also a mentor to Children for Take Stock in Children. And so I've been involved with a lot of the nonprofits and a lot of the community organizations. So I'm well aware of what's happening in Manatee County because I've been involved. I am a graduate of the Leadership Manatee Program in 2022-23, in which we toured a lot of the community. And I've already started with my job as a commissioner in anticipation of getting that position. I've toured Piney Point. I've toured FPL. I've toured the port. I have toured several of the other tour, the ER operations to get ready for what we have going on. So I feel that I'm very well-rounded in knowing what we need as a commissioner and I'm ready to get started with that.
Got two volunteers here. Terry, go ahead and read Carol's. Answer the question one in the, in the, yeah.
Great. So on behalf of Carol, the answer she provided to the League is as follows. I'm an eighth-generation native Floridian that has lived in Manatee County for almost 40 years. I've been a proactive citizen engaging with our Board of County Commissioners for many years on a variety of issues concerning the need for good governance and protection of our resources and environment. I've been a catalyst in the formation of informal groups, organizations, and other individual means to educate, inform, and involve the public to increase their knowledge and awareness of the policies, process, and procedures under which we are governed and how our communities are formed. As a commissioner, my innate knowledge of the land and waters of our state, my tenure of residency in various parts of this county that provides a knowledge of its political history, and my desire and ability to communicate with the average citizen are the traits of an effective county commissioner and a true representative of the people.
And you didn't even get a thumbs. Thirty-minute warning. Candidate Hammy, do you agree with the decision not to ask for an exception for extraordinary circumstances to increase impact fees to their full amount allowable by law rather than calculating the increase as a percentage of the 2015 cost of construction for new infrastructure necessary because of development? Why or why not?
So I do not agree with the decision to not ask for extraordinary circumstances. The developers are getting every project that they're asking for, so it's important for them to pay their fair share while they're doing it. Using a study from 2014-2015, when clearly the increase in the inflation that has occurred in the last seven to eight years is, is just ludicrous. The numbers don't even begin to make sense for what we're looking at now versus what we were looking at back in 2015. It's already been pointed out by George Cruz on multiple occasions that there have been many other surrounding counties who have been willing and able to get the extraordinary circumstance allowance. So clearly, it's something that is making its way through when it's working. So there makes absolutely no sense on why Manatee County wouldn't do that as well because we're facing that same growth problem or facing that same, the same issues that a lot of the surrounding counties are facing. So it makes sense that we would ask for that as well in anticipation of getting that. To me, there's only one reason you wouldn't ask for that, and that's because you've got a board that is making decisions based on special interests and not the overall community needs.
Thank you. And candidate Pearson.
I agree with candidate Hammy 100%. When you think about it, these fees can only be increased every four years. We have the opportunity right now to ask for the extenuating circumstances, extraordinary circumstances, for getting up to 100% as opposed to 50% of the current fee level. If we miss the opportunity, we have to wait another four years before we can even do that. And if you look at the, what would come in from the impact fees, it would more than take care of what, everything we need when it comes to the improvement, the capital improvement. However, if we don't, we're looking at a shortfall in excess of $500 million? That's crazy. Not to ask for it right now seems to be irresponsible. It's a dereliction of duty. So absolutely, the board should be going for everything that they can at this point in time, and that's what I would support.
Okay, thank you. Candidate Pearson. When they come back to finalize the 2024 to 25 budget, the county commissioners will likely defer several infrastructure projects. How will you handle moving forward with much-needed infrastructure needs with not as big a budget as can cover those needs?
I totally understand. And if we look at the, that working session that happened last month, deferring, there were three different options given for deferrals. But why are we deferring? Because of the budget shortfall? And what could take care of that budget shortfall? The impact fees. So one feeds upon the other. Defer, deferral. If we don't have the money in the budget, there were the three options that were put forth. The best-case scenario, a middle-of-the-road scenario, and the worst-case scenario. Naturally, we need to proceed with what is the most pressing issues when it comes to, with a focus on safety as opposed, safety and convenience. But definitely, we don't need to have those budget shortfalls if we go and raise the impact fees as we should.
And candidate Hammy.
Yes, I again would agree with a lot of things that Mr. Pearson says as well. So I watched that same budget meeting. That is an issue. There are other revenue streams we can be pulling from. Most importantly, the impact fees being the largest one. I toured the port. That was a potential for another revenue stream that we could be utilizing rather than taxing our constituents more or by, you know, causing more costs on our end. I believe that when the board got in originally over the last two or three years, they were very overzealous with the amount of projects they were trying to anticipate to begin with, which was problematic because a lot of those were never going to come to fruition. But I do believe that we have to also look at the prioritization of these projects and determine, you know, what needs to be done now, what can wait a few years to get done. But the roads and the infrastructure with all of this development coming in has got to be prioritized to make sure that we are taking care of the safety and the day-to-day quality of life that people are moving down here for.
Thank you. Candidate Hammy, it has been noted that hiring decisions have been based on fit with the board members rather than bringing the experience or new and different perspectives. What is your position on diversity in county government and how the board should be evaluating and selecting and approving hires?
So this is an interesting question because I actually just spoke with somebody the other day who previously worked for the county and had actually left the county because they could not move up any further in the county because of education requirements. Yet they had a significant amount of, of experience in that particular field. And so I said that, you know, that was very unfortunate. You know, I'm a team player kind of approach. I believe that everybody brings things to the table and that it is important for all of us to think outside of the box and utilize the expertise and the knowledge of other people that may think differently than we do in an effort to come up with the best solution to the problem. The goal is, is the solution. The goal is, is remedying whatever the issue is. And you can't possibly have that happening if you have a situation where it's a cookie cutter approach to everybody that is working for the county. There's over 2,000 employees and all of those 2,000 employees bring a certain skill set that is beneficial for all of us and being able to use in making decisions and making it a better place. So I am highly supportive of having a diverse workforce for our county because I think that just makes us better as a whole.
And candidate Pearson.
Again, I'm concurring with, with Jen there. When it comes to diversity, I hate hearing that diversity is a bad word. And we hear that all the time now. That's something that we need to get away from. There is so much that can be learned, as Jen was saying, from other, other points of view and whatnot. But when it comes to the, the example that Jen gave about a person not having the right amount of education or whatever, there are ways to get around that. If a person has the experience for a particular position, there are exams that can be taken through SCF, as a matter of fact, to see if you have the aptitude. And if you do and the experience is there, then why do you have to go to a cookie cutter? Kind of a way of bringing a person into it. So definitely, looking at the various skills, I think is a good thing. Diversity is a good thing, not a bad thing.
Candidate Hammy, I'm, I'm sorry, candidate Pearson. At times, it has been reported that commissioners are directing staff. How would you handle this disparity between the commissioner's own rules? And that is, I won't give the resolution number, but it was from 2009. It states that it is in the best interest of citizens of Manatee County that the government be managed through an establishment of a policy of non-interference by county commissioners in the day-to-day administration of the county.
The staff is in place based on their skills. As commissioners, we don't have those skills. The commissioners are there to listen to the staff and then make decisions based upon the suggestions or the advice of staff. Commissioners are not there to direct staff. You do this, that, or the other. You don't need to have a big head if you're a commissioner. Commissioner is there to listen, to evaluate, listen to staff, and also listen to the community and make the best decisions based on the best information, not to put our own interests ahead of, of county business.
Thank you. Candidate Hammy.
So I think that's a tricky question because I was not a huge fan of that resolution when it came out. I understand the need for a hierarchy as far as you've got the county administrator, you've got the deputy directors underneath, and then the staff goes down from there. But I also am a very hands-on kind of person. So for me, if it's a simple question of trying to get clarification or trying to get, make sure something's moving along, follow up on something that I'm working on, I want to be able to go to the staff and say, you know, hey, what are we doing on this? Or how are we going? Or can I get clarification on this point without having to go through, you know, seven different layers to make that happen? Because I think that's not an efficient use of time for the staff. As far as directing by the commissioners, no, you have to have that hierarchy. There's too many, too many employees for there to be seven bosses running around telling people what they should or shouldn't be doing. And unfortunately, with the current board that we have, the, some of that direction that's taking place is detrimental and putting our staff in a very bad position of feeling like they have to do things that they wouldn't otherwise want to do because of who's telling them to do it.
Thank you, candidate Hammy. And the next question's for you. Citizens feel cut off and that they are not being heard by the county commissioner, at county commissioner meetings with the elimination of phone comments and the frequent addition of late agenda items, which leave no time or ability of citizens to make a comment. Would you restore phone comments? And how else would you reassure citizens are heard on items coming before the board? What are your thoughts on citizen engagement and the changes that need to be made in the current situation?
So I am a huge fan of the community being involved with everything that's happening. It's their quality of life. It is their day-to-day that is being impacted by the decisions being made by the board. I've started a list of things that I plan on bringing motions up for when I become commissioner. And one of those is re, is bringing back the call-ins. It is not feasible. I look at myself on a, you know, a Tuesday, I can't sit there all day waiting to be able to make a three-minute comment for a board that doesn't listen to anybody who's speaking anyways and is not respectful. And so there should be an option for people to be able to call in. The Facebook and the social media should be turned back on. That was ridiculous that that was turned off. People have a right to engage with their elected officials and to give feedback, whether it's positive or negative, about how they're feeling about decisions being made. And it is the job of the elected officials to hear what those people are saying and make decisions based on what they're hearing. And that is not happening right now, and I would definitely be restoring that.
Okay, thank you. And we'll get an answer from candidate Carolyn Phelps. Terry?
Okay, while not an exact answer to this question, it speaks to the same points. So the answer that, the information that Carol provided is as follows. I will take measures to ensure our citizens have every opportunity to engage with their elected officials, such as make our citizens' advisory committees a more active and required part of any issue before the board pertinent to their cause or concern, extension of our newly-created citizens' academy into all parts of the county, timely communications of topics and action on the B.O.C.C. meeting agendas so concerned citizens can take part, communicating the policies, process, and procedures necessary in what and how decisions are made. While a county commissioner cannot be expected to know every citizen in their 60,000-plus population in each district, my goal and only job is to be their commissioner and to make sure every citizen knows what district they are in and who their county commissioner, their first line of representation in our American government is. The job is to work for the people and their tax dollars where they are the boss and the county commissioner is their employee.
Yeah, and she did also in question two state that public call-in comments are valuable tool to provide our citizens with the right and ability to observe and engage directly with local government. Glenn, candidate, I'm sorry, candidate Pearson.
Yes, no. First of all, the commissioners are representatives of the people. We've been, we've been voted, the commissioners have been voted into office by the people. So we should be listening to the people, definitely. By telephone, that should be restored. Social media, all of that should be restored because people do not feel connected to government if they can't communicate with government. And then, when people actually come into the meetings and talk before the commissioners, they need to be respected. I've been there before and I've seen commissioners sneering at them. And personally, they've sneered at me and actually laughed at me when I was there, making certain points. That's not the way you can connect with your voters. People need to know that they are being heard. And if we agree with them or not, or if they agree with the commissioners' decisions or not, we need to listen and respect the public.
Candidate Pearson. What are your plans to reduce residents' dissatisfaction with clear-cutting new developments that lead to dust and destruction on their property?
I know about that firsthand. Where I live right now, there's been the eerie road construction, and it leaves a lot of dust. It leaves a lot of dust. And I've seen what construction crews have done to try and mitigate that, trying to wet the ground as much as possible, but there's only so much that can be done. The construction, road construction needs to happen, and it's a long, drawn-out process. We need to communicate with the public that we understand, we feel your pain. We understand what's going on. We're going to do everything that we can to mitigate that. But there will be a little bit of pain involved as we get these projects underway because they're necessary projects. So we do what it is we can. We listen. If there's something more that we can do, we'll definitely direct crews to do that. But again, just communicating with the public, I think, will go a long way toward making things a little bit better.
Candidate Hammy.
So I don't disagree with what Glenn says in relation to the traffic. It's going to cause some dust. We understand that's going to happen. But as it relates to the developments and the private developers who are creating that dust and that dirt and that unlivable situation for the people down in our district, especially like Ry Road area, Rutland Road area, those developers have a responsibility and a requirement pursuant to the ordinances that are currently in place with our county to make sure that that is not happening, that's not affecting the neighborhoods and the neighbors that are surrounding them. There's already the ordinance in place, which means that it can be enforced. It has not been enforced, and that is the problem, is it needs to be enforced because the ordinance is already there allowing for it. So I would be a huge advocate of shutting those projects down, causing the fines that need to be paid, and making those people be accountable for the damages that they are creating as a result of their development. You, I'm not saying people don't have a right to develop on their property, but you also have a responsibility to not damage the quality of life of those living around you while you're doing so.
Thank you. Colleen, let's take one question from chat.
All right. And we have one question in chat at the moment, and it's from Ruth Lawler. And it is phosphate is Manatee County's largest landowner. Currently, nearly 24,000 acres are permitted for mining, and there is still an additional over 21,000 acres not yet permitted for mining. How would you respond should Mosaic ask for more permitting approvals from Manatee County Commissioners?
And let's, let's start that with candidate Hammy.
Okay, so interesting. I've been researching Mosaic, and actually, I've reached out to them to ask them for a tour. That's one of the places I want to tour to see what they're actually doing because I always like to do my research first and make sure that I know all of the sides of everything. It's my understanding, based on what I've been told so far, is that there's only one mine left in, for Mosaic to mine in Manatee County. And the plant that is associated with that currently is in De Soto. De Soto has been holding the line and not allowing the permitting for the, this mine to move forward. And as long as they continue to hold the line, then Manatee County is not going to get any more mining taking place. However, that being said, the problem that Manatee County has run into is with some of the laws that are oftentimes on a state level, not just on a local level. I am not a huge advocate of mining taking place. I understand that phosphate needs to be created for fertilizer. To me, at this point, it seems that there should be other ways to create fertilizer without damaging our environment. You can't untake it. You can't untake it out of the air and the water and our environment after it's been put there. Um so I would like to look at other avenues before allowing permitting for Mosaic.
And candidate Pearson.
Definitely would take a lot of e- extreme oversight with that. Uh the additional acreage that they have uh that they are not mining at this point, that's good that they're not mining. However, we know how dangerous it can be if you look at Piney Point, even though Mosaic had absolutely nothing to do with it. Uh it sat dormant there for more than twenty years. And then look at the kind of problems it had with the storage tanks there uh with the overflow. So we know that mining phosphates can be very, very dangerous. It can lead to ground pollution, air pollution and the such. Uh however, again, just oversight, the proper oversight. Uh if they're not mining, if the, and what Jen was saying, that right now it looks like they're not going to be, that's a good thing. However, if in the future it ever comes down to it, we'll have to give extreme thought to that.
Candidate Pearson. A recent Supreme Court decision allows arresting homeless people who are sleeping on public property. What are you going to do to provide an option for the county's unhoused? Or are they going to be arrested? Are you in favor of the of creation of a county-owned homeless person camp near Port Manatee?
I think that we need to give a lot of attention to that. We cannot just arrest people because they are homeless. It doesn't mean that we have to be bleeding hearts and allow people to have encampments all over, all over the city or whatnot. But the county can do a whole lot toward helping to mitigate that. There are private non- nonprofit organizations right now that uh we can work with. The Salvation Army and some other organizations as well. Uh whatever the county can do to help provide for uh this problem. We we can't turn our back on homeless people. And yes, I would be in favor of that.
Candidate Hanny.
So I'm in favor of definitely creating services and housing for the homeless population. Like Glenn said, you can't just arrest them. They're not doing anything wrong. They just don't have a home. They don't have anywhere to go. They need services, they need resources. Uh Turning Points is a phenomenal organization, but they are taxed to max of what's happening right now. Um as it relates to the um encampment uh over by Port Manatee, I am not an advocate of that program. That is completely wasteful spending of our money. There is no mass transit out there for anybody to be able to get in and out for resources. You're gonna create uh tents, it's a hundred degrees outside. These people cannot just stay in tents and have no resources for inside or for air. Where are they gonna work? How are you gonna help make their life a better situation? So I believe we do need to come up with additional resources, such as working with the, with the nonprofits and uh federal and state funding and um other philanthorical um options. But I am not a fan uh or a advocate for the location that this current board is suggesting.
Thank you, candidate Hanny. And uh you get the next question.
Okay.
How are you going to heal the relationship with the island? And what is the county's role in the operation of cities in review of their ra- rules, regulations and structure?
So I've had the opportunity to re- to meet with uh Mayor Tittsworth. I've spoken with several of the residents that live on the island. Um I believe it can be healed. Uh I believe that what um one of our commissioners did to Enron around the home rule and to go to the state was appalling. That's the whole purpose we have it to beginning with. Um I am not an advocate or supporter of the uh garage that they're trying to put on the beach. I believe that those three organizations, those three cities have run the way that is working for their residents and it's not up for us to take that over. I know there has been some conversation amongst the three about ha- uh pooling some resources, maybe saving some funding that way. Um the county should be there in a complimentary role to assist with what the county or what the um islands may need. But it's not their job to take it over and tell them what they can and cannot do. Those beaches are huge resources for tourism dollars and reasons that people come to visit. And everybody should be working together, not um fighting amongst each other.
Candidate Pearson.
I completely support home rule. I do not believe that uh that big parking garage should be going up there. It's gonna change the nature of that area. Uh people who live there have a right to be concerned. They should be concerned about this. Uh we should not be doing an Enron around them in order to go to the state and get that parking garage put, put up there. I fully sup- like I said before, I fully support home rule. And I do everything uh within my power as a commissioner to make sure that that is, that that takes place.
Thank you, candidate Pearson. Manatee now has more than sixty-six thousand households that are classified as ALIS uh or living under the federal poverty line. That's forty-one percent of all Manatee households that are struggling to make ends meet or stand just one unexpected expense away from dire circumstances. What ideas do you have to support these citizens?
We need to uh again, there are nonprofit organizations that can help. Uh and we need to be able to direct our citizens toward that. When it comes to affordable housing as well, there are, are way, we need to make sure that with any kind of developments that are coming along, that we are, that we have money that's earmarked for affordable housing. The forty-one percent of people living under, uh living below the poverty line, that's a huge problem. Uh again, directing them toward the, the nonprofit services that we have. And we need to, the, the county needs to give attention to that. There and I'll, I'd have to study that even more. And I'm sure that Jen Hammie knows a whole lot more about that. I'm waiting for her, but I just want you to know where my heart is there. And uh that I would not be ignoring that, but I have to give a lot more attention to it.
Thank you, candidate Hanny.
Yeah, that is, that is a rough, it's a rough question. And I'm actually surprised you're forty-one percent. That's a very high number. Um I didn't realize it was that high. Uh yeah, I do, I do a lot of bankruptcy law in my practice as well. So I see a lot of what's coming through and the struggles that people are having just to make the day-to-day end meet, gas, food, housing. Um I I believe we do need to uh incentivize the developers for more affordable housing. And at the eighty-five percent level, not at the hundred twenty percent po- poverty level, I think that's important. Um they set it at one-twenty, that's still a very high number for people to have to make. I think it's still like seventy-one thousand dollars or something that household has to be making. So we need to try to incentivize more at the eighty-five percent level, which we can do as, as county officials uh to make that happen. I also believe there's a large areas, I'm touring the port and the different areas. Uh you know, there's a lot of companies that want to come in, private companies that are gonna be bringing uh industrial jobs with industrial paychecks um that are gonna be a lot more resources for people to make better income, which is gonna help offset the inability to pay for, for housing. Um so you, you can't force a market that, that struggles with what people have to pay. But you can try and incentivize. Sorry, I went over my time.
Thank you. And you get the next question. Citizen advisory positions have been filled or left unfilled when seemingly qualified apply. With the commissioners stating that none of the candidates think like them. Do you agree with this or not? And how would you change this process? How much weight do you or should you put in the recommendations of citizen advisory boards?
So being that I sat on an advisory board, I sat on the Children's Service Advisory Board, I would like to think that you're putting a lot of weight into that. Those groups are selected based on certain criteria. You get a plethora of people from different backgrounds. For example, the Children's Service Advisory Board, you had a pediatrician on there, somebody from child services, uh some regular citizens. There was a whole group of, of thirteen, a judge. There was a whole group of thirteen people on there that were designed to have different backgrounds to help facilitate making decisions regarding this advisory board. That's the whole purpose of having that, those advisory boards. So what they say in their recommendation should be taken seriously. As far as uh picking and choosing, uh that, again, the whole purpose of having the advisory board is to have people with diversity that bring different ideas to the table. So if you're just gonna cherry pick people that have like-minded, why have an advisory board? It seems unnecessary at that point.
Thank you, candidate Pearson.
Uh you look at the commission right now. When you bring national issues into it, it's very, very divisive. You look at the current commission right now, most of them are of like mind. And how many people are really happy with the way the commission is being run right now? So when it comes to the citizens advisory board, if everyone is thinking the very same way, think of how many people are not being represented. Uh uh it doesn't make any sense. What you need to do is have people with diverse ideas, diverse backgrounds. Makes no difference if you agree politically this way, that way or the other. But we need that diversity in order to have quality advice going to the commissioners.
Okay, thank you, candidate Pearson. Uh your question is next. Do you agree with the recent reductions in local wetlands protections? Are there any other water protections that you would bring before the board if you were on the board?
Quite honestly, I'm appalled by uh what has happened, reducing from fifty feet to twenty-five feet. That's crazy. Uh Manatee County uh had a very, very good record, I believe. Because it was better than the state requirements of just twenty-five feet. So what we have now? Why did that happen? Because developers wanted that to happen. That's a problem. Uh I definitely think that I would like to be, I would like to see them restored to what they were before. Uh if you look at what's, what's been going on with the projects, it threatens our wildlife. It threatens, the, the waterways need to be protected. And I would definitely want to move back toward restoring them to where they were before.
Candidate Hanny.
Four hours, we had four hours of testimony with not a single person other than one developer guy that came to speak saying how, what a bad idea this was, how awful of an idea this was. And it was completely ignored because like Glenn said, it's what the developers wanted. And the minute that that wetland buffer was passed, um that reduction was passed, a certain developer went to Swift Mud and filed for per- permitting for a zero-foot buffer. Because even though they say it's twenty-five feet, it's not. It's actually really, I think, closer to fifteen feet. And there's exceptions that the state allows for that can bring it down to zero feet. So you have no buffers. Like I've said before, you cannot undo what you do to the environment after it happens. It is already gone. Once you damage it, you're not gonna fix it. So I would absolutely, that is number one on my list of undoing as a commissioner, is that, that wetland buffer ordinance.
Thank you. Um, Colleen, do we have a question from chat?
We do, somewhat related. It's from Sarri, who is one of the families, she is one of the families that got evacuated due to Piney Point Leaking Stack in twenty-twenty-one. And the resolution was to dump over two-hundred million gallons of polluted water into Tampa Bay, which led to an economic and environmental crises due to red algae growth getting out of hand. The question is, do you have concerns of the drilling of the remaining of polluted water into the ground and expecting the environment to take care of cleaning the contamination and potentially leaving a legacy of contamination from drilling this contaminated water into our groundwater?
Um that would be candidate Hanny's question first.
Sure. So um as I said previously, I did tour Piney Point. So I did get to speak with the uh company, the gentleman that is uh cleaning that area currently. And I spoke with uh Rob Brown, who's a previous employee who worked in the uh environmental area while I was uh while for the, for the county. Um and they did show us everything that was happening. They took us over to the well where everything is being pumped. I have that same concern, like, okay, you're putting this four thousand feet down under our aquifers. What are we gonna be doing here if there's a leak? Of course, they assure me that that's not good, gonna be an issue and it'll be, you know, seventy thousand years before it gets into our waterways. And it's gonna be in the middle of the, of the Gulf, in the middle of the ocean, so it's not going to affect us. Um I always take all of that with a grain of salt, so I don't know that I necessarily believe that. Um I I don't know that there's anything that can be done at this point because this is the decision that has been made. But yeah, I have a lot of concerns about what that actually looks like for us moving forward. There's a reason we continue to have the red tide and the algae blooms and why I don't drink our water and why I drink bottled water because I think our water's disgusting.
And candidate Pearson.
I have serious concerns. Quite honestly, I don't believe it. I flat out don't believe it. Uh it might be fine for a few years, but at some point, it's gonna come out, oops, and now what? Uh once the water's contaminated, uh if our, it gets into our drinking water, that's just, that's catastrophic. Uh but like Jen was saying, at this point in time, what can be done? What it, what are any other options? I flat out don't know. I'd like to study more to find out. Uh but the decision has been made, this is what they're going to be doing. And yeah, I, trepidation, that's a good word that comes up. That's, that's the way I feel. Uh there, there's a lot of trepidation when it comes to that. I don't like it at all.
And we're gonna, uh candidate Pearson, we're gonna stay on the water theme. How would you protect our regional water supply? Much of the, our sources of water originate or pass through the east part of the county?
How would I protect our water supply?
Our, our water supply, our future water supply and our current water supply. How would you go about protecting that? Drinking water.
Oh, okay, uh our, our drinking water, well.
Bathing, all those things.
Yeah, okay. Again, this, this is something that I, I'm concerned with. But I'm gonna tell you that I would need to study that more before I can give you any kind of definitive answer on that. I'd want to, you know, and that's probably a, a big shortcoming on my, on my part. One thing I, I can tell anybody is that no, I don't have all of the answers. But anything that I'm, uh I, I'll do the research to find out more about it. That's a, a dismal answer, but that's where I am at this point.
Thank you. And candidate Hanny.
No, I, I share the same pause with Glenn because I'm not quite sure I understand the question. I think Glenn might have.
There's been a projection that, that in five years, we're gonna have to start purchasing water.
Okay, so uh, uh, the question is really, how are we going to come up with more drinking water, if you will? So I, I've started with, and if Glenn wants to re-answer that question, I have no problem with that because I don't know that we both, that neither one of us understood it. But um so I, you know, we, we're selling water to Sarasota, we're trying to tap off of that, but that's still an issue. I don't know why we're selling to other counties when we don't have enough for ourselves. So I would look at, at stopping that. Um I did tour with FPL and talked about some maybe water resources there that may be available. Um that does not look great at this point because we've been in such a um uh a reduction in water at this point with the rainfall um that we are at a negative and it, it doesn't allow their numbers to stay up for what they need for their lake. Um I am gonna be touring with um Peace River to find out what their projections look like, uh to see where we can pull from that. But that again, uh involves an extra cost to the taxpayers because those fun, those monies are going to be, or that, that bill is gonna be higher every month for the use of the water. So we have to look at what that looks like and also how we're gonna tap into that. Because there is uh lines that have to be run for us to be able to tap into Peace River, which is obviously much further than Lake Manatee. So um I, like Glenn, would need to do additional research on what, and, and I'm trying to do additional research by meeting with these different organizations to see what the options are.
Uh, thank.
Candidate Pearson, do you wanna add to?
No, no, I appreciate, I appreciate what Jen was saying because I did not fully understand the, the question there. But I, I still say that I have to do a lot more research so that I can get a, a, a better handle on exactly what's going on. One thing I do know, when it comes to our water, I don't drink tap water. I mean, I'll bathe in it, but I have a water treatment. Uh I, 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 my water is treated here, uh and I feel a lot safer with that. I don't feel that that is something that everyone should have to do. But I feel compelled to do it because I don't trust the water. So I would like to look at. But I feel compelled to do it because I don't trust the water, so I would like to look at different ways to improve our water quality.
Okay, uh the next question goes to candidate Hammy. Changes to the comprehensive plan are being considered. What things do you think need attention and or protection in the plan?
So I think there's a lot of things that need protection. Uh one of the ones, things that I read that was very concerning was the desire by the white papers of the developers to basically take out all the language protecting our trees and basically saying they wanna put a one-liner in there in there that says, well, we'll do our best efforts, our best faith efforts to like re-mitigate our our trees or replant our trees. There's like three pages that outline what the um trees are supposed to look like and what efforts they're supposed to take to mitigate the damages that they're doing, and they just wanna nix that. So I have a huge concern about that. They're already getting rid of a lot of our shade trees that we need here in in Florida uh to replace them by palm trees cuz they think they're aesthetically better looking. That I have an issue. The wetland buffers obviously have an issue. Anything that's gonna have a loophole that allows for the developers to do more and more building to the detriment of our quality of life, I'm gonna have an issue with. I honestly have not sat down and read the entire um, you know, LDC, and I would need to do more research on specific issues. I'm waiting for uh the proposals to come back. Hopefully, we're getting those soon so that I can see what's happening, and then I can probably give a a better answer at that point.
So candidate Pearson.
Back in nineteen seventy, Joni Mitchell uh did a song. It was a big yellow taxi. And there she said, pave paradise, put up a parking lot. You don't know what you've got till it's gone. Uh we definitely need, uh when it comes to our wetlands, uh we have to give so much attention to to that. Uh I, like uh Jen was saying, I was just looking today, reading an article about the palm trees that continue to go up. The palm trees are thirsty. Uh they, it it costs a lot of money. They're expensive. And this is what we are putting our money into right now. They drink a lot of water that costs a lot of money, and they don't provide the shade that we need. Uh you look at the kinds of trees that are being ripped out, we can replace those with shade trees. There are certain things that we can do uh to make sure that we are developing in a smart way uh and not paving over paradise, but contributing toward.
You don't mind being a few minutes after, I'm going to give Carol Anne a chance to answer one. Um and that is, and we need to keep this in a minute. Uh um so Terry, what are the two most important issues uh facing Manatee County? Select one of these and explain how you would solve it. Oh, no, it is three. She does have three down there. Okay.
Candidate Phelps offered the following response to that question. Um she said, the three most important issues are, one, poorly planned growth, two, protection of our natural resources and American grown food products, and three, affordable housing. The growth our county has experienced in the last four years has been unprecedented due to a variety of factors. Our land development code and comprehensive plan must serve as the constitution of land use for proper planning, fiscal ability to provide services and sustainability in the future. Amendments to the plan must maintain the integrity of the plan and must be reviewed in whole on a consistent periodic basis. While our Manatee County Commissioners do not control the international trade agreements that have been negatively impact have negatively impacted the American farmer, we can provide local protections, incentives, and balance growth with the need and ability to produce the agricultural products our nation and our communities require to sustain our health and independence in the future. A function of good governance is to ensure that all growth is planned for the benefit of all.
Thank you. Uh candidate Pearson, the three most important, and select one of these and explain how you would solve it.
I uh I had thought about this. I'd answered this before uh with another group, and my three, it was affordable housing, water protection, and growth. And when we look at growth, uh I know everyone complains about the hyper-development. It's a huge problem. Uh but when you think about people who, let's say their grandfather or grandmother or their parent left them several acres, a number of acres, and they can get several million dollars if they sell it to a developer, what do you think they're going to do? They're going to sell it, and I understand people doing that. Growth is inevitable, but we need to manage the growth properly. Uh I I know that a lot of times developers will come in and they'll ask for a change in the zoning, and the Board of Commissioners just goes up, says, okay, fine. However, there needs to be a lot more oversight to that. We can develop growth properly. It's going to happen, but we need to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place.
Thank you, and candidate Hammy.
So uh my three were uh future planning for roads and bridges and transportation, addressing the environmental and conservational concerns, and then development, affordable housing, and homeless VA services. Um and so I'll I'll address the roads, bridges, and transportation. Uh you know, it's it's a great way all those people coming down here, but we got nowhere for these people to go, and honestly, I'm tired of uh it taken me, you know, fifty minutes to drive three miles to my office every day. Uh I I opened my office close by to avoid that very particular reason. Um but I think we need to work with uh the state and federal levels. Um I think it's imperative. We're gonna need, these are huge multimillion-dollar projects that we need to complete, bridges, roads. Uh we have got to work with state and local uh or state and federal officials to try and get some funding on that to get these done sooner rather than later. Uh you know, we've got to increase those impact fees to be able to utilize for the roads that we need. We need to work with private part, private-public partnerships. Uh you know, I I know the developers is kind of a double-edged sword. Um a lot of people don't like the developers' development, but listen, truth of the matter is, is that they can get things built quicker and cheaper than we can as a county, and so we've gotta work with them.
Okay, and uh we have, are coming to the close now, so candidate Hammy, you have a minute for your close.
Okay, well, I just wanna thank everybody for uh jumping on here and listening to us speak. Uh Glenn, it's always a pleasure to uh chit-chat with you as well. Um I think that a lot of, that both of us, and I I would put Carol in there as well, I think we all have a lot of um like ideas, and I think we all greatly care about the community. Uh I think it's really just coming down to who you feel will be best suited to do the position um as county commissioner. I would ask that people look at my uh background, that they look at my education, that they look at everything that I've done with the community thus far. Uh I was involved with the ethics complaint to get rid of a certain um commissioner that was on the board that was engaging in unethical behavior. I am willing to stand up and speak for the people. I have done it in the past, and I will continue to do it moving forward. And I would work very hard as your commissioner uh to help with the residents and the businesses and all that we need to keep this quality of life that we have here um in beautiful Manatee County.
Thank you, and candidate Pearson.
Well, like Jen said, I wanna thank all of you for inviting us here. It it was a pleasure and an honor to be able to address you and to for you to get to know us a little bit better. I have the utmost respect for Jen, and she knows that, and Carol as well. Um and I like that because it makes no difference what our party affiliation is because there are problems facing us here in Manatee County that we all need to address. It affects all of us. So we don't look to divide people based on, you know, if you're conservative or liberal or whatever. I with my background as a journalist and the kind of research that I've been able to do, I feel that I'd be able to do an excellent job as commissioner, and I'm looking forward to doing that. Uh I don't have the answer to everything, but what I do know is uh what I have within my heart, uh it's the my values, small d democratic values. I will listen to residents and take and respect the voters, listen to them, show them the utmost respect, and make decisions to the best of my ability.
Thank you, and uh on behalf of the League of Women Voters, we thank um uh Jen Hammy, Glenn Pearson, for their time and for sharing your positions and your where you stand on the issues that affect all of us every day. I would invite people to also be sure to make our additional candidate forms uh on July twenty-third, District One School Board with uh and then on July thirty-first, District Seven Board of County Commissioners.